Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammes?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the March 19th council meeting and also March -- oh, wait a minute. I've got -- sorry about that. I just printed an agenda and it printed last meeting, so we'll just go from here. So the consent agenda will be approval of minutes from the April 27th council meeting and approval of liquor license for Amore Mio and claims in the amount of $357,964.13. Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hammes, second by Hamilton.
There was a question on the claims. There was one invoice that was not in there, but this includes it?
I don't think that one was supposed to be in there.
So this does not include it?
Correct.
I don't have the numbers, but that's good enough for me. Thank you.
And that Amore Mio, that is only Sunday sales. They already have their license.
Sunday sales, okay.
It's just their Sunday sales license.
Give you any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hammes?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, move on to our public appearances, and we have Rebecca Young this evening to talk about Beautify Fairfield. Hello, Rebecca.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm going to try to make this really brief, and I have a paper with some information to pass around, so you can look at that. I'm Rebecca Young. Some of you might know me as Becky or Becky Bloom. But no matter how you know me, if you know where I live, you know that I love gardens. I'm down on South Main Street, and I have this beautiful display that starts in the spring and goes throughout the whole year. And I just finished my Master of Family in Consumer Science, and while I was working on that, I've been thinking, what can I do for my community to help improve it in some way? And with my passion with gardening, I've been working on Beautify Fairfield, which is a nonprofit organization that works to enhance and maintain public garden spaces. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that I'm really looking forward to the prospect of working with the city in the public gardens, but I'm also looking at other garden spaces. I'm looking at schools. My first project that I'm doing this spring is at KRUU FM. They have a little planter box in the front, and I did that last year. My business donated the time and services for that, and this year Beautify Fairfield will be doing that. And then I've talked to Scott Vaughn, and the fire department has a little garden with a bench out front, and so we're going to be maintaining that. And we're still doing fundraising to file our nonprofit status, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
Great.
You have any questions or thoughts or -- no?
Rebecca, well, yeah, I just, I wanted to mention certainly, you know, more hands, the merrier in our efforts to beautify Fairfield. You're probably aware, we do have a city commission?
Yes.
That does a lot of the work, really centered around the downtown along with some other projects, some painting projects and things like that. In their history, they have also looked at some projects around the city to extend that. At one point, we actually looked at possibly having ward representatives so that we could, you know, look at projects in each of the different wards. So that may be something that you would consider doing as well, because we'd love to see that as well.
Yeah.
And I guess, you know, personally, if this is, you know, the direction, this is your passion to go with a separate nonprofit, that's fine. If you'd like to join forces with the Beautification Commission, we have three board seats open there, so.
I would love to work with the Beautification Commission.
Okay. Okay, good. So we should talk about that offline and see if we can add to it, but we certainly all support your efforts, counsel. I think it's really great that we see more of that within our community.
All right, thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, counsel, we have our librarian Rebecca Johnson to talk about the annual summer reading kickoff. And I think it's a venture. I know. But she's in, she's in character. She's not wrong.
Right. One of the more important things we do is to inspire and encourage children to continue reading when they're away from school in the summertime. And we have expanded upon our summer reading program to include other agencies throughout Fairfield who offer activities for children in the summer months. And so Parks and Rec will have a booth at our summer sign-up event. There will be other agencies included on that day. And the date to mark your calendars is Saturday, June 6th, from 1:00 to 4:00. We are requesting just a partial street closure, about a third of a block in front of the library, going from the east side of the parking lot exit to the west side of the alley that's near our front entrance. So just a portion of the block. It would not take parking away from Doc's Inn, nor would it keep people from using our parking lot. But we would like to have a, we plan to have a jumping castle out front, and so we'll have lots of children crossing the street in that portion of the block. So again, that's 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, June 6th. And Afton, our youth services librarian, is here to tell you about our theme for this year. Thanks.
I'm super excited, guys, because can you guess the theme? I'm just, I'm just wondering. It is every hero has a story, so of course, we're going the superhero route with this.
All right.
We've got lots of cool things already scheduled. There's going to be craft activities, story times, like always, we're going to have people from the community coming in to do events for us, and I think maybe the police and fire department will be coming, so that's very exciting. I guess, do you guys have any questions about, I mean, you probably remember summer reading from years past, but yay, excited! So it's going to be going all through. It's going to start, like I say, it's the June 6th start date, and then it's going to run, and, and the final day of the program will be August 1st. We're going to have our big final program that day, so.
Great. I don't know if we can match your enthusiasm, but I detect an undercurrent of enthusiasm that we will say we're definitely in support of what you're doing.
And I was going to say, if anybody has a theatrical bent and wants to come to our kickoff day as a sort of their choice, we would be more than happy to have you. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, counsel, then, I'd like a motion to approve the street closer as described by Rebecca.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Great. Next, counsel, move on to our resolutions and action items. First will be to set a public hearing for our city budget amendment, which will be our next meeting, May 26th. Annually, we do review and amend our budget for the past year, so we would set that date for our next meeting, May 26th.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, we have the Wellmark-Frendo Foundation Safe Paths to Recreation Grant. That will be accepting that award. Great news for our community, great support for the, all of the projects going on at the recreation center. And I'd ask Michael Hallie if he'd give us some background on this. Michael?
Sure. So our Blue Zones coordinator, Jenny Weber, forwarded the information about this grant onto the Blue Zones group here locally. It's the Wellmark Foundation, so it's somewhat related, because Wellmark is one of the sponsors of the Iowa Blue Zones Project. And it was for these mini-grants up to $25,000 for community projects. So I consulted with city engineer Melanie Carlson. I said, for that amount of money, what kind of sidewalk project or some sort of, something to enhance what we're doing over at the pool and gym? And she said, well, we really could connect Sixth Street with Ninth Street so that all the kids in the south area of town would have a place to cross Ninth that's at a corner, at a stop sign rather than the middle of the road, which is how they'd cross at Washington currently. So is this this little piece of a block and a half, a sidewalk? And I called the woman in charge of this grant, and I told her what we were going to apply for, and she said, well, we get a lot of applications for sidewalks. And I said, but, this is like the last piece of the puzzle that'll connect the whole thing to our new pool. She's like, all right, put that in your grant, but don't try to talk up the Blue Zones part of, so I didn't even mention we're in a Blue Zones community, just talked about the project. Melanie created this really great map that showed visually what we're talking about, and lo and behold, we got the grant, so.
Great, terrific. Very good. And as we've seen with other state programs like this, that we have, that we've been awarded, the, it does bump you up in terms of your status for grants. And I think initially, we were maybe all a little bit disappointed that there weren't some dollars involved in the Blue Zones designation, but, you know, the great help that Jenny Weber has been to the whole process and her steering us towards this grant and then discovering that we can get this through the Wellmark Foundation, I think is very positive. So to enter, we do need to take the step of approving the grant agreement, so I entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hammes.
Question, is there any local match that's required for this, Michael?
Up to $2,000 potentially. And I talked to Mike about that this morning, or this afternoon, and we may have to take it out of our sidewalk fund, but they're giving us just a lump sum cash amount, so when we put it out to bid, if the bids come in favorably, then it might just be completely self-sufficient.
Good.
And the sidewalk won't be ready this season, but it will be ready starting next season. It'll be done by the fall. So this summer season, families and kids will still have to cross over on Washington. Again, it's not ideal, but it's just for one year.
So this, again, will be on which street?
It's on West Jefferson, between Sixth and Ninth.
And on which side of the street?
North side.
I see. Okay, thanks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, we have a couple of projects that have been completed, and we have letters of acceptance to approve. Matt, if you'd join us to talk about these, these projects. 12th Street and Burlington, so there's traffic safety elements that were completed.
So 12th and Burlington, 12th and Burlington was the sidewalk crossings, the paved sidewalk that was done by, let me make sure I get the name right, Wooders Construction. So they came back and they visually looked at all the joints and made sure all the joints were sealed properly. That was really the only thing that was holding up that project completion. So Melanie visited the site, and she's recommending approval of the project and acceptance, so.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Not entertain a motion to accept the project as final?
Move to accept.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And then the next would be the acceptance of Highway 1 Water Main Boring Project.
This was the project done by Drish Construction, and it, it involved a new case boring underneath Highway 1 up on the Fourth Street Project. So essentially, there's a steel casing with a new six-inch main that ran underneath the highway. That was a part of the, it kind of was in conjunction with the filter project in that area, so.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel, on the boring project? Not, entertain a motion to accept the project as final?
Move to accept.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. And then finally, Matt, if you'd talk with us about the engineering services agreement for work on Lincoln Avenue extension?
All right. After the last Economic Development Committee meeting, we were discussing extending Lincoln Avenue, 625 feet to the east. If you're not familiar, Lincoln is the new road that's out by Pilot Grove. So this would extend it back to the east to open up further development of the 80, 50, 80 acres that is back to the east. It would also involve extending the water main and preparing an acquisition plat, because that currently is not public property, so we'd have to do an acquisition plat so the property owner can deed that over the city for the infrastructures. There is $21,000 for the design, and then it includes $19,000 for engineering during construction services and things like that. And we're hoping to get that let yet this spring or this summer, so work can get done this fall.
Okay, thank you. Jessica, anything you'd like to offer as comment from your discussions with Economic Development Committee?
Not necessarily. Matt pretty much covered it, but these funds, well, Mike, did you, did you chime in? Or no?
No.
Okay, I thought you said something. These funds, or the funds for this will be covered by the TIF, so we will have to do some maybe short-term juggling, right? But, but they will be covered that way, so.
And the engineering will be completed by what time, and is this a project we're thinking about for 2015?
Correct. We're hoping to put the drawings on file at your July 13th council meeting.
Okay.
So then hopefully, that'd be August, September construction.
Okay.
We want to do it early enough that, you know, it's not running in too late into fall.
Okay. I just, I see Adam Plegge here. Adam, is this tied to any firm plans for development of the property back there?
Yes, actually, one of Mark Hickenbottom's projects came in front of the Board of Adjustment today. It was sort of one of his spec design houses for a duplex. That variance was denied. It's on a small interior lot in the city. But he is planning on putting up his first unit as kind of a test of waters, see how it works, do some redesigning. And his plan is based off of how many houses he can attach to the sewer to start building off to the, just the east of the church down there, off of what he can get onto the sewer main that's already there. And if that's successful, then he would continue further east and attach to the sewer line that is currently being put into the north, sorry, the south of Pilot Grove.
Great.
But this also helps with potential development to the east of Pilot Grove.
Yeah, absolutely.
That commercial lot, so.
Yes, absolutely.
That's why we want to get it done this year.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. And, yeah, no, I appreciate that, Jessica, that, you know, there's some commercial opportunity, but I think this also is probably one of the more probable areas for residential development as well. And with our target on increasing housing within the community, this would be a good investment. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. So then I'd entertain a motion to approve the engineering services agreement with French Reniker for this project.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammes?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Thank you. Next, counsel, we'll be setting a public hearing on loan agreements with Piper Jaffrey concerning our 2015 refunding. And Mike, speak to that just a bit, and what date would we be setting for that public hearing?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. We will set our next council meeting as the public hearing for that loan agreement, and this is simply to discuss our agreement, our engagement with Piper Jaffrey.
Okay, very good. That'll be May 26th, so entertain a motion to approve May 26th public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, counsel, we have resolution to approve the Fairfield Municipal Airport New Terminal Development Program draft allocation. Robert's lines here. Robert, if you could give us the news on, the latest news on that development?
Yes. Finally, after years, we've got to this point of the new terminal building. And FAA has required the airport board to review everything and to pass a draft allocation. And then the city council also has to pass a draft allocation also. Everything's in front of you. We did last week, Mike and I opened up one bid, the second time around for the terminal building, and that's for Myers Construction. That's where that first two numbers come into play. With this time around, it was within 6% of the engineer's estimate. So FAA, we had a conference call, they're on board. The airport boards approved it. The city council now has to approve this. And then, actually, Myers, they got a couple things they have to do yet, but this is the first hoop we have to go through just to get going on the new terminal building. And I'll take any questions.
Robert, will you explain this a little bit?
I can explain.
There's two different columns. There's one, the last white column says eligible, total eligible state cost for state and local at $297,632. And then the far right column is local at $133,92. So the local, our shares, it's going to be $133,92. Is that what you're saying?
No, actually, our, if you go down our allocation, I'll start a little bit before this. If you look down on the bottom right-hand side, when, the FAA, over the years, have changed their, how they pay for certain items on terminal buildings. So in this instance, our main issue was a conference room. They did not want to fund the conference room. So that's why you see the 61.6% share on the federal side, 15% share. We got a GAVI grant from the state that we applied for, and we were very fortunate to get that. We did not think we would get that grant. They pitched in $150,000, which brought our share down to 23.4%. So actually, our share is $233,000 at this point, and we hope or want to use our airport development fund money to, for that. We should have, at that point, enough money in the development fund to cover that, so it wouldn't, the taxpayers wouldn't be paying for that. This would be funds that we have saved up for many years for this project.
Okay.
So it's a little, you know, most of the time, the FAA's on all our other projects have been 95 to 90%, but this time, they have declined on the conference room. They feel like it's more of an open, where the public can come and use it. It could be used maybe for revenue side, so they declined to include that. That's our major portion that they would not include in the funding part. But talking to the FAA on a conference call a couple days ago, actually on Friday, they're on board with everything. They're actually on board with the one, unfortunately, the one bid. We, we're, nobody's happy that we just got one bid, but we went out of our way, and I did myself, to contact many contractors in the state of Iowa and outside the state of Iowa, contractors that have done other terminal building projects. It was very, very difficult. Mike might add to that. I worked really hard on this, and I, I met with the, or called the Building Association of the state of Iowa. They sent out all kinds of information about this project. It's just the way, the way it is. It's, it's, we're not happy, but this is, this is what we have in front of us.
Okay. And Robert, the reason you want the conference is because that serves the customer base that, that flies in and out of our airport, and it's something that they're, they're asking for also?
Yes, they, they, we need to have a conference room. That's where we'll have all our airport committee meetings. That's where all the meetings that, anybody that flies in, whether it's a small plane or a business jet, that's where their meetings are going to occur. And, and also that anybody, the police department, the fire department, they can have meetings there also. It's, it's a very nice setup what we have, and I just need your approval to continue forward with the project.
Okay. So counsel, your approval would be, then be passed on to the FAA, who would give a final approval to this project?
Exactly.
So entertain a motion to approve the terminal development program?
So move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Revolinsky. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thank you again for your support. This has been a long, a long 20 year, not a long 20 years, but a very successful 20 years, thanks to everybody and the mayor and the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. We appreciate it as well, and we look forward to having that new facility. As we move on to ordinance 1127, which will be the third and final reading. Again, this is about the abandonment of private sewer systems. Once someone does connect to our system, that there is, there are elements that are sort of taken care of to close off the, the prior facilities, septic systems and cesspools, private faults. This is a public hearing. We'll open that and ask if there's any public comment on this final reading. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and counsel, entertain a motion to pass the third and final reading?
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hammes. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammes?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. As counsel, we have the third and final reading of our fee rate increase for services. We'll open a public hearing on this issue as well, and ask if there's anyone who would like to comment. Not seeing any public comment, we'll close the public hearing. And any feedback, counsel, that you've received?
I had some input from Ed Kalani from the Board of Adjustment. He, he was feeling that the rate here, going up to, what is it, $200 or $150?
$150 for?
$150.
Board of Adjustment?
To approach a Board of Adjustment. He felt it was high. I disagreed with him, and I guess, you know, he's not here to speak for himself, so we did have a discussion with Becca. He gave example of what if someone came with the idea of putting in a ramp for handicap ramped and handicap ramped and didn't. Anyway, I, anyway, that did come up, but I'm still voting yes here.
Yeah, I think I caught some of the discussion on Facebook that was going on, and understandably, when people see our fees rise from purely a percentage basis, that does raise a little bit of a red flag, but again, compared with what it is that we expend in resources, the number of petitions that we have annually, and also the fact that it is really our role to, you know, pay attention to the revenue side of our budgeting as well, that this is, you know, really, this is still a prudent thing for us to do within the city.
I point out also that, you know, for instance, Becca mentioned she gets overtime if she has to come to these meetings. There's extra expenses involved in, in the operation, and my feeling in general is that users, you know, those, users of services should pay for them, rather than the whole community sponsoring their service.
Yeah, it is a good point. If it's, if it's just being funded from, from property tax dollars, then everyone is subsidizing the special conditions and cases that, you know, people are coming up and asking for.
Exactly.
And doesn't seem to be in complete balance there. Entertain a motion, then, to pass this from the third and final reading?
So moved.
Moved by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammes?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay. As counsel, we have the second reading of our ordinance setting simple and minor subdivisions. Public hearing, we'll open that at this point in time. As to if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any discussion, counsel, or any feedback on, on this? Mike, have you received anything at all?
No, mayor, I haven't. I actually, I have, several of our boards are in favor of this particular ordinance, as it, it would eliminate some of the issues that we follow in our daily activities within the city. So I've received some support of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Then counsel, entertain a motion to pass from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Hammers. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinski?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. As counsel, in my report, I'd like your approval for an annual proclamation that we do celebrating National Police Week. And part of this is to observe and recognize the Peace Officers Memorial Day. That would be today in Fairfield, Iowa. The Police Officers' Memorial, which is in Washington, DC, I have visited, and it is quite a wonderful monument there. Obviously, it represents those officers that have given the ultimate sacrifice their lives in the line of duty. Fairfield does have an officer who died in the line of duty many, many years ago. We continue to honor Mr. Sutherland's memory in that. But when we look around the country and what's happened in Mississippi recently, and what happened in New York not too long ago, we recognize that, that this is important to support those who put their lives on the line for all communities across America. So entertain a motion to approve the National Police Week proclamation.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Counsel, I'd also remind you that we will be starting our strategic planning process, visioning process on Thursday. We'll meet twice this month.
Isn't it Wednesday?
Wednesday. What did I say? Tuesday.
Thursday.
So Wednesday, yeah, we're going to see a lot of each other this week. Ways and Means is meeting on Thursday, so. But that's a good thing. So we, just reminding everyone, is everyone able to attend on, on Wednesday?
Is it six, is it?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Very good. So we look forward to that.
Till midnight.
Joy's bringing the food to keep us awake, so we'll be all right. That's all I had. Our city attorney is not here.
Yes, he is.
Is John, you there? Hey, John. Anything to report? I'd like to ask you about two of my favorite issues.
Logan apartment closing. Logan apartments, we're at a point where we're revising the assignment assumption agreement, which should be the end of the tunnel, except we're getting feedback from Kansas City about our electronic submissions. And this just burns me up, because we, we have been through this kind of a process already. We've sent some of the documents in four times. There'd be one word changes on some of the changes that were sent in. We, the last couple of documents that we revised, only in a complete bureaucracy could they ask for this, but they were neatly printed, and we had to send them back in typed. They were all electronically transmitted by email, again, scanning. And now we got something from Kansas City that says, we have to go back in and go through something called an associate and partner performance system entry, and have a new login number and a new password and so forth. So I've got Tom Jimenez coming to sit down at a table and go through that again. This is silliness. He is not a person that needs to be compared with his other partners. He's an individual, and somebody's just trying to keep this rolling. So I'm trying to keep it rolling too, but the person in Des Moines, I think, is convinced we've turned in everything we're supposed to. She's having us make some small amendments to the assumption agreement, which is about five pages long, and it has a few things in it that we have tweaked. But other than that, it's her supervisor now that seems to want to have it look a little different than it does right now. So that's all I can tell you, is I think we're very close.
Okay.
And I stressed that it's very important to us to get this thing done last month, that we're in the process of trying to do some other things with our city's financing, and there isn't a reason for this to delay that I can imagine. And I've asked them about 10 times in letters to them, if there's anything wrong with this deal, please tell us, because we've owned it for 10 years. This is not your ordinary HUD mortgage follow-up that you need to do. This is just about the rents. Please help us. And at this point, we're that far along, so.
Okay. Well, thanks, John.
Second thing I'd like to mention is, we continue to have some calls about the Tenco houses. I am expecting to talk with Ivan Weber, I'm going to be in Des Moines on Thursday and Friday, about something that's come up, and there's a distinction between the short-term crisis stabilization concept and regular Fair Housing Act exceptions that have been incorporated by the Iowa Legislature. In our town, we've got some classic examples of the exception housing, which can be in any classification of neighborhood. And the best examples are the Jackson Point facilities, and their definition of who can live there is basically a resident that would be living similar to any other resident in the community in a leasehold. And these are also defined as individuals who are developmentally challenged. There isn't anything in the Iowa law that bootstraps the federal law exception, which would preempt us from having something in our ordinance about what we've been regulating with our Board of Adjustment for the short-term crisis concept. And I'm trying to get that sorted out so that we don't miss something on this before we lower the boom. We are probably going to do citations on at least what is being done that is not as Board of Adjustment directed. And beyond that, I'd say that's going to happen sometime, probably within the next 30 days. But I'll have a better answer on if there's any other distinctions or anything that preempts us. Jackson Point and that concept has been on the table in front of us ever since last October, when Board of Adjustment went about this. And I don't think there's a parallel at all to this short-term, five-to-seven-day concept of stabilization temporaries in anything that is in this exception in the state code. So I'll have a better position on that after I'm back, but I want, I want to talk to someone that's expert and has been in court on it before, and that's the plan while I'm up there. So that's my report.
Thank you, John. Those were my two issues. Appreciate it. And then we'll move on to our administrative reports. Mike, report on the Fourth of July vendors is?
That will be Derek.
Derek reported on that, too. Okay, so then we'll move on to our park and recreation. Derek?
I have to update my minutes for my park and rec board meeting. I normally don't update the accounts on our park and rec board minutes, but I thought I would this time. Just, one of the items on our agenda was about our membership rates, and the city has a revenue goal for our department of, meaning 45% of our revenues compared to our expenditures. And taking that into account, we're going to, in the next fiscal year, increase our membership rates 10%. So what that does is, for an example, one of our individual rates for a year is $250. If we increase that 10%, that makes it $275. So it's a $25 increase. Just wanted to let you know, any comments on that?
Derek, why don't you tell the counsel where you are now in terms of a ratio of revenue to?
Right now, I'm going through all my fees, and our revenues compared to our expenditures, we're sitting about 34%. So in the next year, if I increase the 10%, it gets me up to 37%. And if I was, and the cuts that I'm proposing to make next year would get me from 37 to 40, 40% of my revenue. And then the next year, I'll try to make up that 5% gap. So gradually hit my target.
So you're approaching it from both sides, from both cuts and, and revenue increase? And then obviously, part of your next year's budget does include some of the, some of the new items that are going to be coming on as well with the pool and recreation center?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So this was, and this was passed by your board?
This was passed by.
Have we done any kind of polling or anything, or to get a sense of if this would make a difference, or just not really?
Let's see. If you do a poll and ask people whether they're in favor of a fee raise, what is the likelihood that you get above 20%?
Well, I tell you, in favor, but would you lose your, yeah, yeah.
The poll will be renewal. But what we have on our side are those, you know, gleaming new facilities that'll be in place sometime soon.
One question. Didn't the fees go down within the last year?
Yep. We consolidated all our fees from just a rec fee to just a pool fee. And with our layout of our facility, to manage it with our department, we've made it all a facility fee. So when you come in, you get to enjoy all the facilities.
That's good.
So.
And so that combined price is less than the two separate ones would have been?
Mm-hmm.
So it's 10% increase from the decrease?
Yeah. Good.
It's good to keep in mind.
The second thing that we covered was our outdoor pool, and our proposed opening, I guess we should call it a soft opening. We're shooting, our target's June 10th if everything goes okay. And with that comes a change of our hours. Like I said, this is a whole facility fee, our whole facility. So when our outdoor pool's open, our whole facility's open at the same time. So we got to change our hours within the whole facility. So I think what we're proposing is an outdoor pools, like a summer season hours, and then a fall/winter season hours. So when the pool's open, we're proposing that our facility, our, we'll just talk the outdoor pool. We're open from 1 to 8, Monday through Friday. Saturday's 1 to 6, and then Sunday's 1 to 6. And then our concession stand would be open all those same times, but close an hour early, just for cleanup. So.
Okay, great.
Any comments on that? No?
Sounds like a good plan.
Then, I think it was a couple of months ago, I approached the council on buying concession equipment. I think the council asked me to go back and come back with a proposal on buying some concession equipment. And finding out concession equipment's really, really expensive. And I attached an Excel spreadsheet here on some of the things that we're proposing to buy. One was a ref, like a refrigerator, a slushy machine. You ever gone to a gas station? It's called For Real, it's a milkshake kind of maker machine. I don't know, maybe not. And then a pretzel warmer. And of all those pieces of equipment, that milkshake thing is the most expensive. And we had the opportunity to ask our Park and Rec Foundation to meet 50% of the whole project, or buying all of the concession equipment. And, mayor, I guess what I would be asking the council is if they would be willing to meet that 50% and, out of their contingency, and pay for the $6,837. I will say, if we're not feeling comfortable on that, on that item, I guess I would propose maybe that milkshake thing be removed out of the, out of that fund.
That was my first thought.
The building contingency fund you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
We can't do that till after the building's open, right?
Well, no, we, no, we can. We talked about, Mike, maybe you can update us on where, where we are.
Sure.
Because there was some change in those, in those figures.
So we've had some change orders specifically relating to the upgrading of the wiring within the facility to handle the adjustable basketball hoops. That change order was for approximately 56,000. So right now, we have approximately 180,000 of contingency left. It's, it's up to the council on how they wish to spend those contingency dollars. You give me authority to spend up to 15,000 on that contingency line item, but certainly that is our entire contingency for the entire building. So if we were to buy concession equipment and have a change order later, find some sort of change in the project, we're using those dollars allocated for that process.
The other thing I'm concerned about also is that, you know, the recent finance meetings that we had with Piper Jaffray, the short-term borrowing that we're going to be doing for, to cover the pledges over the short term, will generate about $110,000 in interest, which we don't have budgeted in the project right now. So I spoke with Tom McMahon, made him aware of that. And I think everybody's thinking that we'd really like to hold on to that, that, as much of that contingency money that would, you know, generally offset those interest charges. So now, obviously, we still have a construction budget, and we still have a construction season. We may not be able to do that, but I think at this point in time, our thinking should be that if there's additional money, it should go to covering that interest.
Also, just sort of from the perspective of blue zones, or in general, I mean, childhood of B.C. is a big issue, and a $10,000 milkshake machine, you know, maybe, you know, we could do without. It's kind of my feeling.
Do you have any ROI projections on this stuff?
We did do, yeah. We did go from if you sold 10 a day to 15 a day, how long it would take to pay back that equipment. And the longest payback one was that, that real machine.
Like 100 years or something?
That's one expensive milkshake.
Well, the sled.
Is it called a slushy machine?
It's, it's an alligator ice machine. It comes with, it's about $2,000, but it comes with $1,000 worth of free concession equipment. And when you priced it out compared to what you just buy outright from the store, it was cheaper, cheaper than you get.
I can, I may help you with that, if you want to talk about it.
Okay. And Roberts, you know, private company has helped us with a lot of this equipment, and has really reduced the amount of concession equipment that we will have to buy. So there's, that's, that's been a big, big help to, to this overall budget. And I think those other items outside of the milkshake machine are probably worthwhile supporting. Now, Derek, you didn't mention also that the Park and Rec Foundation is going to support.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting right before the city council meeting, and this was one item of discussion, was the concession equipment, which they were willing to go up to 50% and share the cost. And then the one thing that we're not thinking about was lockers, locker space. And that's, that's something to keep in mind, too, that we're investigating and looking at. And our foundation was, was willing to pay up to $4,000 of concession, or locker equipment. So that was good news, so.
Okay. Very good.
So what I'm, I guess, just to, what I'm hearing is that maybe we could proceed with our, our pretzel, the refrigerator options there.
What would that total, Derek? That was just a couple thousand dollars, or?
Three, three, five, 3,500?
Well, without the, without the, without the milk machine, we'd be at about 1,800, a little under 1,800.
Right.
From the city contribution side. So do we need a resolution for that here?
Yeah, I think we should have, we should approve that.
I would move for that amount. For the, in other words, this line, this, the city contribution of those equipment minus the milkshake machine.
Move by Revolinski.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion carries.
Go ahead. Thank you.
No. July 4th vendors?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's going on?
Um, okay. July 4th vendors, last year, obviously, we didn't have the 4th of July, but in the past, there was vendors that set up for the event. I'm trying to remember if it was, was it Kia Saco came up, and they put on the whole event. They, they used the city's electricity, and I think they profited off this.
The J.C.'s.
The J.C.'s.
Stockport, there was, yeah.
Yep. So this year, we're proposing that if you're going to sell, you know, concessions, that they should pay a peddler's fee. The city already has established peddler's license. And on top of that, Park and Rec included electricity. And on top of that, Park and Rec included electricity fees and setup. Last year, we spent about seven, was it $7,000 from our local option sales tax to upgrade our electrical out there. So we've invested for this Fourth of July to happen every year. That with our rates and the peddler's rates, it'd be about $50 for somebody to sell concessions on the Fourth of July. And we are able to accommodate up to 15 vendors.
Put that towards your milkshake machine.
That's going to loom over my head. But yeah.
So do you want approval for the, for the use of, for the policy to?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay.
Question before we vote on it. Did you have some vendors who were just small-time operators who would be put off by this?
Yeah, probably.
Would not come and?
Did this, although, John, I think those are probably the same people that are vendors for something like Art Walk and pay that fee base as well. Do you know what the Art Walk fee is? Somewhere in there, it was 40, $50.
Maybe 40.
You know, we had the same discussion with RagBri. You know, we had a vendor fee and we didn't want to.
Well, RagBri is its own thing.
Chase off the small people, but you got to set it somewhere.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Then entertain a motion to approve the policy for vendors.
I move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Seconded by Revalinsky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek.
Any other business before the council? Not entertain a motion to?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, to adjourn to Wednesday evening. Motion by Hamilton, seconded by Hammers. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.